This time I'd like to call the regular council meeting to order on Tuesday, May 27, 2014, at 7:35 PM in the Twinsburg Government Center. Shannon, please call the roll.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Here.
Mr. Scathedy?
Here.
Mr. Roden?
Here.
Mr. Sorese?
Here.
Mr. Fury?
Here.
Mr. McDermott?
Mr. Yates?
Here.
Okay, please join us for the invocation and pledge of allegiance led by Mr. Fury.
Father, we seek your guidance for the business that is before us in planning for the future of the city of Twinsburg. Give us vision. Guide us to make decisions that are not self-serving but for the betterment of our community so we can continue to move forward in a positive direction. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I need approval of the minutes for the regular meeting of May 13, 2014. Are there any changes or corrections?
No.
Okay, hearing none, the minute stand is written. Now, we're going to begin with our awards and presentations, and at this time, it's -- oh, I'm sorry.
Do we want to do audience participation first? There's only one, and we have such a large presentation.
Sure, that would be a great idea. We'll go ahead and flip the -- flip it around a little bit. Audience participation.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Bill Romer with Summit County Council, and I've been here many, many times over the past, though, six or seven years. I did see that the Charter Review Commission was on the agenda for tonight, so I wanted to come over to be able to hear what's going on because I really appreciate traveling around Summit County to all 31 municipalities and seeing the issues that are facing the elected officials as well as the residents. One of the issues that will be facing everyone in Summit County in November, there will potentially be on the ballot, a increase in the Summit County sales tax of a quarter percent. The funding would go to enhanced 911 service, enhanced 800 megahertz radio service, and actually Chief Nogue and I had a chance to speak about that before I came in tonight, funding for a new downtown arena, as well as funding for other capital improvements, including improvements at the jail and additional funding for deputies at the jail. I've talked to a number of people to get feedback on this. We will be having hearings at Summit County Council chambers, both on January 2nd and January 9th. January 2nd will be at 4:30, January 9th will be at 7:00 PM.
You mean June.
I'm sorry, June, thank you.
Winter.
June. Both the 2nd and the 9th. If anyone would like to talk to me afterward and give me their opinion, I'm really looking for feedback because it's a very, very important issue. It would essentially increase the sales tax from five and three-quarter to 6% in Summit County, the piece that would be going towards Summit County. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now, we're going to go ahead with our Charter Review presentation, and Mr. Sorese, take it over.
Thank you. The Charter Review Commission was selected in January by this council and had met from January through May and has basically done a lot of work in preparation for the election this fall. They've come up with nine different ballot issues that they will be presenting to council, and tonight will be the first reading of three on these issues. But I wanted to introduce the commission before they make their presentations. First of all, the chairman, Russ Sipin, is not -- was not able to be with us here tonight, as well as one of the members, Drew Romito, couldn't make it either. They're both out of town on business. But I want to introduce, and if you would stand, Vice Chair Dean Martin, and members of the commission, Dave Albright, Doug Detwiler, Twila Jones, Jay Magnus, Kim Monacino, and Jenny Spira. I want to thank you for all your hard work, and now Dean will take over and we'll go through the presentations.
Good evening, council, mayor, Mr. Maestros. I would like to start off by saying, and I think I speak for everybody here, thank you very much for giving us this opportunity to serve on the Charter Review Commission. I know for myself, it enlightened me to learn and understand a little bit more about how the city's written, and through the charter. And I'd like to thank everybody who gave feedback. I know Mr. Sorese chaired the commission from council, and I'd like to thank Mr. Maestros for helping us with some of the language that went into these ballot amendments or proposed ballot amendments. As Mr. Sorese says, we have nine proposed amendment changes for the commission, Charter Review Commission, and we decided we'd each break it up. Unfortunately, Russ and Drew were not here tonight, so I'll get to double up a little bit more on some of the amendments. But the first one is 3.01, and Mr. Albright would like to present that to you.
Thank you, Dean. You all have copies of these in front of you, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. So, 3.01 is -- deals with the council and the number of terms, number and terms. The way the charter currently reads, it declares that the council member-elect shall assume office at the first regular meeting of council in December following the election, and we wanted to clean that up to say specifically on the first day of December, rather than we could get some kind of an overlap if the -- if December 10th is the first council meeting, and the regular term shall be four years, four years from December 10th. May not be the first council meeting that year. You may have an overlap one way or the other. The next -- the first council meeting might be the 8th or the 12th, or you have overlap on when the term ends versus the next person coming in. So, and then we also have on here to remove just the language that goes back to the late 70s that staggered your wards. So, those are the two changes that we're proposing.
I have a question, maybe for Mr. Maestros or you, but currently what we do now is when a council member's elected, we are sworn in and take office at the first council meeting. How is this going to change our current procedure? Are we going to then have to have a meeting or have a special occasion where we're sworn in on the 1st of December instead of just making it our first council meeting when we're typically sworn in?
You will have to -- new council members will have to be sworn in on December 1st, and this is something we talked to the Charter Review Commission about because the Board of Elections actually contacted the city and asked, at the last election cycle, when does -- when do these council terms end? And our answer was at the first election.
So, it floats.
It floats, and the Board of Elections was a little uncomfortable with that, and we told them we'd certainly bring it up at the next Charter Review Commission because there was no date certain. When any of you or anybody else runs for council, you're running for a seat, a four-year term with an uncertain date, even though that date might only float a week or two. Board of Elections is much more comfortable with a date certain of when it runs, begins, and ends.
So, if this passes, then all of our terms will end on November 30th, right?
Yes.
Yes. With swearing in on the 1st, I'm sorry, ma'am.
Okay.
And when I first took office as mayor, Mayor Carabic swore me in on December 1st in his office, and then I had--
Then you did something.
-- the ceremonial swearing in at a later date.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is the mayor set up that way? Is that why he did that? I don't even know. And I don't think it's clear either.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'd just like to say, I really enjoyed my stay here, and I really enjoyed learning a lot about the city. Was very comfortable with it, and I look forward to doing more, being active in the city. So, my amendment was for the vacancy in the office of the mayor, which is 4.04. And I'll read what we actually wanted to just add and clarify for the vacancy of the mayor's office. "In the event that the office of the mayor shall be vacant for any reason, the president of council shall thereupon become the acting member and serve for the president -- excuse me, for the unexpired term if such term is not in excess of six months, or shall serve until the filling of such term vacancy by the electoral of the city, but shall not thereby cease to be a council member. If the president of council is unable or unwilling to serve as acting mayor, the vice president of council shall thereupon become the acting mayor and serve for the unexpired term if such term is not in excess of six months, or shall serve until the filling of such vacancy by the electoral of the city, but shall not cease to be a council member. When neither the president nor the vice president of council is unavailable or willing for any reason to perform the duties as acting mayor, the council, by a vote of the majority of all members of council, shall elect one of their members to serve as acting mayor, and such member shall serve for the unexpired term if such term is not in excess of six months, or shall serve until the filling of such vacancy by the electoral of the city, but shall not cease to be a council member." We did this just to clarify, if no one wants to take over the duties, then we just wanted to clarify that they could have a -- the council can actually elect a president. I'm sorry. Can elect a acting mayor. Any questions?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Let me take a quick look at 4.05, Powers of the Mayor. Won't read all of this, but simply the added paragraph in here, which was pretty much the suggestion made more than anything as a point of clarity since we don't specifically have separate positions for Director of Public Safety. So, taking a look at 4.05A, second paragraph will be added. "The mayor shall serve as the director of public safety for the city, and he or she shall serve in that capacity unless and until the mayor appoints another individual to serve as the safety director." Continuing on, the last two sentences were revised as well. Now, the third paragraph. "All appointed officers shall serve at the pleasure of the mayor. Members of all boards and commissions shall serve at the pleasure of the mayor and council." Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, this is the--
It's going so fast.
Do you have a question?
Do you have a question?
I have one question about that.
I'm sorry.
So, the way it read before was that they would serve at the pleasure, the boards and commissions serve at the pleasure of council. You're adding mayor and council.
She gets to vote. The mayor gets to vote.
On the appointment.
Yeah.
And that's coming up in this one.
Yeah.
But it affected both. You'll see now in the next presentation.
Good evening. So, staying in Section 4.05, the powers of the mayor, but moving on to Section B, the legislative powers, simply one sentence that we're advising that there should be a change to, and the logic and reasoning was, we pulled a lot of other charters around in the local community, and most everyone, if not all of them, had it written as such. So, it's simply one sentence with the addition being at the end. "The mayor shall be entitled to a seat in council, but shall have no vote therein, except the mayor shall have a vote on appointments to all boards and commissions."
And I know I attended most of these meetings. There was a lot of discussion regarding, a lot of the committees and commissions were actually just appointed by the mayor, where we have kind of a different system here. So, I think this was, I mean, there was a lot of discussion regarding this and input from the mayor and other council members, so I think this was a good recommendation.
So, what does it mean that the mayor shall have a seat on council?
Well, that we did not change. The only thing we--
Yeah, but that's my man, it's the law director. I'm sorry.
Take it over there.
Yeah, I saw that. Not in red.
Yeah, that's standard language, and that's been language in our charter probably since the beginning, that the mayor, the mayor does hold a role and does have a seat on council, just not a voting seat. And the only change that this commission made is that the mayor shall have a vote on boards and commissions, and that's it. But a seat on council, meaning the mayor can discuss, take part in the conversation concerning legislation, but just doesn't have the voting power.
Got it.
In fact, it's stated in the charter that the mayor can enter into all discussions regarding council.
Which you should, the mayor should. Yeah, I agree.
Good evening. I'll be speaking on Section 7.05, which is covered by Resolution 57-2014 tonight. What this is, is as I was going through the charter prior to us beginning the Charter Review, I noticed, I started first with Section B. It lists a non-competitive and a competitive group, that the classified service shall be comprised of both the competitive and non-competitive. It gave an example, or what was included in the non-competitive, but it had no mention of what was covered by the competitive group. So, I looked at the Civil Service Handbook, which said what the competitive group was, but didn't clarify the non-competitive. So, most of the changes here are just updating this. It's not anything, any basic change. It's just clarifying language and getting language included that should have been there originally, that was somehow, when it was getting written up, got in one place and not the other. And once the commission got further into this, in Section A, we started talking about the directors of all departments. If you look at the unclassified service, Section A, Item 2, there are a lot of things covered in there which are no longer relevant. We had the employees of the public library are in the charter. The clerk of the Board of Education are all covered as unclassified service. So, in Section 2, we just went through with the help of the mayor and Mr. Maestros to determine what are the relevant positions that should be included in the unclassified service. So, everything that you see here is just bringing it up to date and covering what really needs to be covered here. And as I understand it, you will also be getting a recommendation for an amendment to this tonight after Colette had a chance to look over it. She tweaked some of the additional wording just to make it cohesive with some of the other city documents, so that we have the same language everywhere.
So, is the process going to be to issue or to revise the current resolution?
That would be, there was, there's just a difference in the terminology used between this and the salary ordinance. So, we wanted to bring this and make them compatible, and I'll point those out in the next reading that you have in two weeks, and we'll bring that to you. And I would just also like to briefly point out, we did present this, the changes that were proposed here to the Civil Service Commission also for their review.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. We looked at Section 7.12, Department of Parks and Recreation. We looked at the current language, and we felt that we wanted to make it a little bit more robust, so we added a section that talks about the appointment of the director of Parks and Rec, and also the duties of the Parks and Rec. Questions, comments?
No?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We had some big discussion about this next section. We looked at 7A01, and obviously it affects the city currently, and we felt that this amendment, or this proposed amendment, puts more clarity into 7801. It was very general, very vague on what we can do with classifications of zoning in the city, and we felt that we could get a little bit more redefined, and again, with the help of Mr. Maestros, we felt that we made some changes to this 7801 that would, in the procedure, that would definitely help the city. So, I'm basically going to read the whole section because there were so many changes that we made to 7801. It was easier just to read it, and then you can look over it afterwards. "The city shall be divided into designated zoning classifications, example residential, commercial, industrial, and such zoning classifications may be further divided into subclasses, example R1, R2, C1, C2, I1, I2, etc. In each zoning classification, the city shall designate specific uses that are permitted and prohibited within each zoning classification. Any change of zoning classification or subclassification of any parcel or parcels of property in the city or in the uses permitted or prohibited in any zoning classification or subclassification within the city of Twinsburg must first be submitted to the Planning Commission for consideration and report. In the event the city council shall approve any of the preceding requested changes upon the report of the Planning Commission, it shall not be approved or passed by the declaration of an emergency, and it shall not be effective, but it shall be mandatory that the same be approved by a majority vote of all votes cast at the qualified electors of the city of Twinsburg and of each ward in which the property so changed is located at the next scheduled election. Said issue shall be submitted to the electors of the city only after approval by council of a change of zoning classifications or subclasses or in the uses prohibited, permitted or prohibited in any zoning use classifications or subclassification. However, should council disapprove any such changes, the issue shall not be, shall not be submitted to the voters. However, any change in the designation of zoning classifications or subclasses or in uses permitted or prohibited in any zoning use classification or subclassification of land here and after annexed to the city shall be subject to the requirements of Section 7805 herein." So, basically, the first part of this procedure was the part that was written in a little bit more depth. Any questions? I will direct you to Mr. Maestros.
I have no questions.
All right. The next proposed change was Section 801, and again, this was another issue that we had some in-depth discussion, and we went back and forth--
Oh, I see the red.
-- within the commission. This had to do with the primary election for the office of mayor. Currently, it stands that in May, we have a election, a primary election, so that two candidates can go on towards the November election. The big concern in council was that if you have a mayor that doesn't make it past the primary, they're basically in office for five or six months as a lame duck mayor until the November election. We're not a bipartisan, we're not a partisan city. We're not concerned with Republican and Democratic issues, so to speak, but, so we felt that if we remove the primary, it may alleviate the concern of having a mayor in office for five or six months if they don't make it past the primary. We went back and forth with the committee, trying to move the dates for the election, whether it was in June or July, and we couldn't get anything to coincide with what we felt comfortable. So, we felt the best proposed change, or to you, would be to just remove the primary completely.
We vote on this every four years. It's okay.
And that's what was brought up in council, I mean, or our committee. It's, you know, it stands as is right now, and it goes back and forth, so.
That's a good point.
And the last change was, obviously, we've had some advancements in technology. We thought that we could do, add electronic notification into the charter. So, basically, what we've changed in the charter, and this is Section 12.04. "For any provision of this charter that requires notification to be posted in a newspaper or general election, said requirement shall be satisfied by posting or electronically advertising such information on the recognized city website and/or any other electronic medium generally recognized as an industry source with such information." And that's it. Any questions?
Thank you.
And those are all our proposed changes. And again, thank you for everybody for their feedback and the involvement with the Charter Review Commission.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate it.
Guys did a great job. Thank you. Right, yeah. Yeah, we appreciate it. I was really impressed with the amount of research that went into it, and once the research was presented, there was really good discussion on both sides. It wasn't just like ever a rubber stamp. They really fleshed out all of the issues with everything. Did a very nice job. Thank you.
I liked the presentation, too. That was a nice hearing from all of you. That was awesome.
Appreciate it.
Dean, a little too much, but everybody--
No, I, like I said, attended most of the meetings, and we did a really good job working together, and, you know, I think the discussions you guys had, and, you know, there was some audience participation, and, you know, and council, Gary was there, you know, we were able to, you know, you listened to us and asked questions. I just think you guys did a really good job, and this was a really good group put together.
Thank you very much. We do appreciate it. Next, we're going to move on to council communication and committee reports. Mr. Yates.
Yes, the Planning Commission met on May 19th. There was three items on the agenda, Pulte. If you guys like to sneak out, you're welcome to. You're not going to-- I know you want to stay and listen to all this, but--
Thank you.
Yeah, and you're all very polite, so I figured I'd let you know.
Thanks, Doug.
You guys.
Bye, Dean. Bye. Bye, guys. Thank you.
But anyway, the, there was another revision to the landscape plan for the first phase that was approved. There was just some discussion about it, and everything is, I guess, moving forward with it. Phase 2, the final plan, final plat approval, was also in front of Planning Commission that night, so that's moving forward into the second phase of the Corvitz Farm. And then General Diecasters was in. Geis Construction is building. It's an additional building that's going on their site. It's moving forward. There was a condition. I guess there's some access to that particular area, and there's a huge tree that they want to save, so they're just looking at how they can adjust a driveway. But other than that, they've got their site plan approval, so they'll continue to move forward. Other things I'd like to mention, I did attend the cleanup Twinsburg event that Environmental Commission put on, and it was a great event. I had my family out there. We cleaned up an area around Creekside, which I didn't think would be that bad, but then the environmental area there and the wetlands was, I think we had about eight or 10 bags. We actually had to go to Brewster's and the Gander Mountain to get additional bags because there was just so much debris that we picked up in there. But it was a great event, well-attended. The day wasn't great, but that's all right. We, you know, had a bunch of groups go out and do a lot of cleanup around the city. Let's see, there's, from Parks and Rec, there's a duathlon is this weekend, so all the, anyone interested in trying a multi-sport event, this is a great event. It's short, you know, two-mile run, 10-mile bike, two-mile run. So, those that want to pull the mountain bike off the rack in the garage and give it a whirl, this is a great event to do that. It's very well-run. Derek does a great job. Mickey does a great job putting it together. I think there's maybe a few from my family that might race this year instead of volunteer, so we're looking forward to it. I just want to wish the track team good luck. They're going to be at the Divisional One Regional Meet at Austintown Fitch. We have a number of kids running in that, so if you see any, I'm wishing them luck. They're going to be out there on Wednesday night. And then lastly, I did attend the tri-chamber event that was at Signature, and I would encourage anyone who, we participate, my firm participates in that every year, but it's, whether or not we did or not, I would go to it. It's just a really well-run event. There's a great turnout from businesses from the Aurora, Twinsburg, and Solon area, so I would encourage any businesses that hasn't participated that in the past to next year, look for it, but it's a great way to network, and so, anyway, that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Roden.
Thank you, Mrs. Stoffer. As Mr. Yates said, we attended the Keep Twinsburg Naturally Beautiful. It was a great success. Congratulations, Daisy, and a job well done, and to all the environmental commissioners that are on there as well. There were about approximately 65 people that came out and volunteered, even in the rain. I want to thank you, mayor, for coming out. I know you planted some trees with, or some plants with the Girl Scouts, and saw some pictures on the DVD that Daisy's husband made, which was really great. I watched it, and hopefully we get a chance to run it somewhere where people can see what happened, because it was really, actually a fun time. There was quite a few students that came out from the high school, and it was a great time. We actually had a surprise guest, Skipper from the Lake County Captains came out and took pictures with the Girl Scouts, and so it was really a well, and Miss Stoffer was there, Mr. Sorese was there. It was really, it was a great event, and, you know, even like with the rain, it was still very exciting. Also, with the-- Also, with the Environmental Commission, they are, they do have vegetable plants and seeds that have been donated, and we pick them up. And the sprouting gardeners will start planting the first week of June, for those who are interested. And then also, don't forget, on June 14th is Free Shredding Day for all of Twinsburg residents from 9:00 a.m. to noon. And this is sponsored by Kent State Regional Academic Center, and will be at the, right there on Creekside Drive. That's it for my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Scafidi.
Good evening. Thank you. The border zoning appeals met on May 14th. There was one appeal, Appeal Number 112014, that was a Dorridge Drive resident requesting a seven-foot side yard setback variance for a garage. His existing garage currently sits in one spot, and all he's doing is tearing down the garage and putting up another garage in that same existing area, no larger, no smaller, but when it was built way back when, it was, it conformed at the time. But now that he's tearing it down and rebuilding it, he needed to have a variance because he needed that seven-foot side yard variance. So, it's not that he's moving any closer or further, or making it any larger. The board had their work session, and then they made their vote. It was a four-to-zero vote that they granted the variance. So, at this time, I would like to make a motion that we waive the 30 days waiting period for this variance, 11/2014.
A second. Mr. Ceraci.
A second.
Any question? Any discussion? Shannon, call the roll, please.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott? Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Thank you. The only other thing I have is Lynn Muter, I believe her name is, from the planning, is it Muter?
Yes, it is.
In the planning department. I understand, I found out today, that she had taken a test, and she took her test with the American Institute of Certified Planners. I had to write that down, because I knew I wouldn't remember all that. And so, and she passed her test. And the reason I found this out is I happened to run into her and a couple of the other employees out to lunch today, celebrating her success. And so, I just wanted to throw that out there tonight, and congratulate Lynn on her success. And as she said, now she has initials on the side of her name. I guess she's an AICP.
Quite an accomplishment.
Yeah, absolutely, it is. Yeah, she said it was a lot of hard work, and she's glad it's over, and, yeah, echoes off to her for what she did. Anybody that's sent in any meetings with her and Larry, you know, she's very knowledgeable, I think, and the two of them do a great job together. So, again, congratulations to Lynn. Other than that, that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. My committees have not met, but we are going to plan a safety committee meeting sometime soon here. That's all I have. Mr. Fury?
Thank you. The redistricting committee has submitted to the Law Department a preliminary map that we will schedule a meeting shortly for review, and none of my other committees have met, so that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ceraci?
Thank you. The Taste of Twinsburg Committee meets tomorrow here at City Hall, and a Twins Day Committee will meet next Wednesday, June 2nd. As was mentioned, I participated in the program last week to clean up Twinsburg, and I just wanted to thank Daisy and the Commission for all the hard work that they do. It was a great day. Derek even came in and cooked for us. I appreciate that. But it was, it was a surprise, I think, to most of us, how many people showed up and really wanted to pitch in. So, it's a good sign for the future. As Mr. Roden said, a lot of young enthusiastic kids from the schools want to get involved, and it can only grow from here. So, congratulations to all. And I also attended, as President of the Chamber, I attended the three-chamber business-to-business event that we had last week at Signature. It was very well-attended, and I wanted to thank all of our local businesses for being there and advertising and being part of this, and also thank all the people that came and participated in the event. And earlier this evening, we got our first view of the new comprehensive plan, which will be coming forward soon, I'm sure. But we got to see some interesting and great ideas for the future of Twinsburg, and appreciate that. Thank you.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Okay, it's time for the mayor's report.
Thank you, Mrs. Stoffer. Good evening, everybody. First of all, congratulations to Lynn Muter. I have to throw that out there also, because she really worked hard and did a great job. She was here earlier this evening with Larry Finch, presenting the comprehensive plan, and also worked very hard on that project, so she had a lot going on this past year. So, congratulations to her. Also, congratulations to the Environmental Commission, Daisy Walker in particular, for really taking this on. I know Lynn Muter was a big help with that for the cleanup day, and there was lots of participation, and everybody did a wonderful job. My announcement for this evening, I love this good news, and it keeps coming. Recently, City's Journal published an article called "Top 17 Small Cities in Ohio," and in the state of Ohio, Twinsburg turned out number two. So, we are just delighted here that we ranked statewide as number-two small city. We've been working very hard in this, in our town to preserve open space and on education and industry and economic development, and it's all paying off, and we have a fine community here, and I'm very proud of everything that everybody's been able to accomplish. So, congratulations, Twinsburg, on being number two in the state for small cities. And one of those projects that shows our city spirit and our team spirit was the Parade of Flags that you may have seen for the first time over the Memorial Day weekend. And special congratulations, Mark Kattowski back there, our IT guy, who is filming the meeting this evening, and films all of them, really spearheaded this project. The money from this project will go towards the Cost of Freedom Memorial Tribute that's coming to Twinsburg in July of 2015. But he came up with this idea, I think Shannon was kind of instrumental in this also, and Angel Keefe, but they came up with this great idea, the Parade of Flags. For $30, you can purchase the right to have a flag in your yard for five holidays, Memorial Day, Flag Day, Independence Day, Patriot's Day, and Veterans Day. The team will come out, set the flag up for you in time for the holiday. After the holiday, they will remove the flag and store it and bring it back for the next one. So, as you may have seen, McTarian Parkway was lined with flags put up by this group of volunteers, and it was absolutely gorgeous, and we're starting to see flags throughout the city. People are becoming aware of the program, they're purchasing the flags, and I hope it continues and grows, because what a way to show our patriotism and our spirit in the city of Twinsburg by the Parade of Flags. So, $30 for the entire year, and then if you want to up, re-up for the next year, it will be another $30. But, let's get flags flying all over Twinsburg for all of our patriotic holidays. And again, thank you to Mark Kattowski, and I believe Mark had Boy Scouts, some Boy Scouts out there helping set up the flags. And, you know, this was a first time, so it took a long time, but we're getting the process down, and we really appreciate it. An event coming up very shortly, on June 13th, is the Twinsburg Chamber of Commerce Golf O outing. This is Friday, June 13th, and since it's Friday, the 13th, there's going to be a Halloween theme. Registration's now open, so please call the Chamber of Commerce if you're interested in that golf outing. We have a couple thank-yous today. The first came from Bill Viner, who is a Ranger at our golf, Glen Eagles Golf Course. And Bill and the other Rangers there and the staff of the golf course put together a 90th birthday party for Jim Giarelli. And most of us know Jim. He's just, he's a, just a wonderful, wonderful man who has contributed so much to our community and works up there at Glen Eagles, 90 years and still working. It's pretty amazing. So, he put together a little afternoon reception for Jim Giarelli just to celebrate his 90th birthday, and I wanted to personally tonight say happy birthday to Jim. It was a nice thing for Glen Eagle staff to do, and Jim really enjoyed it. I was there and got to see his smiling face, and it was very enjoyable. Also, I participated in Career Day, as did many of our employees in the city of Twinsburg. We were able to go into Bissell School and talk about our professions and what we do every day on a day-to-day basis. So, I received a very, very nice note from the third-grade teacher, from all the third graders in the class that I was speaking to, and my granddaughter Julia's in that class, so it was kind of special for me. But I would like to say to the third graders how much I enjoyed that morning, and thank you to the teachers for allowing us to come in and talk to the children a little bit about our professions and what goes on here in the city of Twinsburg. Also, you probably know that I serve on the Clean Ohio Fund, the National Resources Assistance Council, and every year, we have a TAC committee who goes out and reviews the different projects that are submitted for funding. The Clean Ohio Fund is used for land acquisition, basically, and sometimes some other kinds of land projects, but basically, it's land acquisition. So, there was more than $1.9 million distributed into this round of funding. Summit Metro Parks, this is a project at Liberty Park, so I'm really pleased about this one. It's the Twinsburg Bog Expansion Project, $335,000. Also, another Summit Metro Parks project, this is Sagamore Headwaters Preserve, $1.1 million. A Twinsburg Township project, the Holly Phase III Property Acquisition and Improvement Project, $213,000. And the city of Akron, Little Cuyahoga River Phase I Land Acquisition, $254,000. So, the, we are hoping that, well, we know now that the next rounds of funds will be available in July, so we will have another round of funding for these types of projects, really important in the state of Ohio. This is how we, in the city of Twinsburg, have been able to do some of our land acquisitions for our parks and open spaces, and certainly throughout the county, so I'm pleased that that's going to continue, and it was approved by the state. So, great work being done there. Also, I had a nice thank-you note this evening, and this came from Pete Metropolis. He says, "I must express my thanks to personnel in the city's Building Department for their assistance after the last storm. Dan was helpful and helpful, was helpful in assessing the problems and areas and suggesting solutions. The residents of Twinsburg are fortunate to have dedicated, professional, and capable employees. Please pass along my thanks to Dan and also Russ for their help." So, thank you, Pete, for taking the time to write a letter to us. And now, I think we're ready for department head reports, starting with Karen.
Good evening, everyone. As you know, at last council meeting, we had Melissa Schilling, a senior at Twinsburg High School, do a two-week shadow. And I have to say that it was very nice to have her in our department. She was so helpful with me and my staff. After that closing of the senior experience, the high school had a senior experience symposium, which they invited the individuals and the companies that participated in this career day, I would say. And she did a nice presentation of all the work that she did in the Finance Department. So, I just wanted to acknowledge that. I thought that was such a great program, and I think more seniors should get, you know, involved in that to decide, you know, or get an opportunity to experience careers that they may be interested in. So, I just wanted to thank the high school for conducting such a nice experience for the seniors. I enjoyed it. Also, just wanted to do a follow-up, as we always hear about refunds being requested from Regional Income Tax Agency, I just wanted to give you an update on where we're at with these various requests for refunds. As you know, that once a company puts in a refund form, it takes three years, they have three years before that request is expired. And during that three years, once they request the refund, there are various questions that are asked from Regional Income Tax Agency for the, you know, is the request amount correct, et cetera. So, they have a series of questions that the company must come back and respond to, and they have up to three years to do that. So, I just wanted to give you an update. I can't give you the names, but I wanted to give you the amounts that are out there still pending for, subject to be refunded. One is for $545,454. That request for refund was made in October 2012. And again, three years from that point of request. At this point right now, there have been a series of questions asked of this company, and yet, there has been no response as of today. An additional one, a larger one, $1,182,760. Again, another refund that was requested in November 2012, and as of yet, no response has been given to the questions asked of Rita for this company. $747,259. This is one that was requested just the last year, so they have an additional three years from that point, and until we hear something from them, you know, again, questions was asked, so they have that time period, but this one is one of the most newest ones requested. $10,919,000, same situation, and the last one, $42,681. All of these refunds total up to $2,529,74. That is still out there pending and subject to be refunded. Just wanted to give you FYI on that. As far as our collections is concerned, for the month of May, we have received $3,852,456 compared to last year receipts in the amount of $6,182,979. This reflects a decrease of 38% or $2,000, $2,003. And what that entails, I did send a memo to let you know what that entails. Last year, a particular company gave large bonuses to their, to their employees, which is not going to be repeated as of May. So, as a result of that, that's the significant drop that you see for the month of May, and that's, I just wanted, didn't want to alarm you. In addition to the rescinding of the quarter percent, but that's why it's 38%. Refunds in the amount of $50,566 are also reflective in the May collections. The total year-to-date receipts collected is $12,187,800 compared to last year collections of $13,68,711. This reflects a decrease of 6.74. The net cash distribution applied due to the rate reduction is $525,737 compared to last year, $860,018. This reflects a decrease of 38.87% decrease. Lastly, we are almost getting very close to our completing the 2013 audit, as I just continued to report. We did file for an extension for June 30th, and that is because there is a new requirement as far as reporting electronically. So, the information that we are collecting, the work papers, et cetera, it is now required that we submit this data through a web base that is through the state auditors, and that is an opportunity allowed them to benchmark, to do a comparison of what other communities are doing. So, that's just effective for the audit year 2013. Any questions? That concludes my report.
Thank you. Derek?
Good evening, council. I too wanted to thank Daisy for the Cleanup Naturally Beautiful Campaign. Go ahead, Dorian. And I want to appreciate Gary recognizing my cooking. But I think we were all pretty surprised by the turnout, especially in the winter, and I think it's only going to be bigger and better next year, and I think we learned a few things, and we could even get the word out, I think, a little bit more. So, that was, that was great, and great to see, from little tiny kids to older adults. It was pretty cool. Crazy seasonal mode right now. We have about additional 120 staff onboard for Parks and Rec. Waterpark is open, if you've been up there. The new water feature is there, Mrs. Scafidi, which has been very...
It's great.
Very great. Everyone loves it. It came in a week later than we wanted, so, which was bad, but good, because we were able to paint the pool, and we weren't going to, so we ended up painting the pool while we were waiting for the piece of equipment to come in, and the pumps are all brand-new and working great. Public doesn't see it, but it's working how it's supposed to work. The solar power is getting hooked up next, and the concession stand, Brandon wanted me to say this, has new options, chicken wraps and a bunch of other things. The concession stand is going. Camp unbelievably starts in a week and a half, so any six, 12-year-old in the city of Twinsburg can come up with camp, come up to camp. Safety Town starts June 9th. Rock the Park starts June 13th. And we have Strackin, Novak, and Grange Insurance as a presenting sponsor. We have Mike the Ganley Man in Bedford as a big sponsor. We'll be raffling off a two-year lease of a 2014 Jetta. You can do that throughout the entire summer. We'll pick the winner on our last concert. And Panini's is onboard as an after-party sponsor. Kent State University is onboard as a sponsor. Chromescape, Walmart, and Camp Pampiano Roofing is a new sponsor for us this year. As Mr. Yates mentioned, the duathlon is this Sunday, and even though he says it's short, if you want even a shorter race, you can come and volunteer and stand in one place and direct people. So, we'd be happy if you want to volunteer. Let me know, and we can stick you on a corner, and you can help direct people where they're going. And Mr. Ceraci mentioned Taste of Twinsburg on June 22nd. We'll be involved in that as well. And then, we're going to be involved with a classic car show hosted by Rush Hour on June 21st, working on that. And we should be looking forward to a ribbon cutting sometime in the future for the Laurel Trail, so that'll all go out to you when that's... Trail, so that'll all go out to you when that's ready. And we have a lot of new things coming, some fitness equipment coming. I sent out an email today about fitness equipment as a notification of some things changing. We have new benches coming to Center Valley Parkway, and we have a new floating dock coming on Center Valley Parkway as well, waiting to get the timing to get that all in with the service department, and a bunch of new trashcans in parks and new grills. So you should be seeing kind of a big facelift throughout the parks and throughout our department. That's all I have.
I just have to say that the water park does look amazing. It looks like it's brand-new, with all the paint on the bottom of the pool and the slide and the new feature.
If you haven't seen the slide yet, it looks like we bought a brand-new slide, and I was kind of skeptical, but it looked, we had to turn down the, we had to turn down the flow because you just, the first person going down went, luckily it was staff, but it was, it was slick, so we had to turn down the flow because it is super slippery now.
They went and they were like, whoa.
Yeah. No one fell out, everyone stayed within.
They loved it.
But yeah, the pool looks almost brand-new, and I don't think we're going to be building a pool anytime soon, so I think things like that are going to be what we need to do every few years. All right, thank you.
Great, thank you. Larry.
I was hoping I was going to make the announcement that Lynn got our ICPs.
I'm sorry.
I was scooped. I would, I would like to continue the congratulations to Lynn, and Lynn definitely has been such a great help in the department. She supports planning commission, she works with the environmental commission, and does a lot of work with them, and was really instrumental in helping put together the comprehensive plan to the extent that we have it done this year. And quite frankly, it would cost us $100,000 or more to do a comprehensive plan like that if we had consultants involved. So, again, thanks to Lynn. Also, I'd like to thank council for their support in providing the stormwater retention improvement that serves Pepsi-Cola Company. If you remember, about a year ago, we were talking about this, and we were wondering how that was going to come about and function, and thanks to council's support and Amy's design skills, we were able to do in-house the design, get agreements together with the property owners, no cost for the, for the retention area itself in terms of using the property. And the design was implemented using city, for the most part, using city resources, and the resulting retention area functioned well despite the significant heavy rainstorm events we've had over the last couple of weeks that would have put Pepsi out of commission had it not been for those improvements, because of the same problem they would have had in the past. So, thank you very much to council, and I'd like to just reflect to you the appreciation of the Pepsi-Cola people for not having interruptions to their business and letting them breathe a little easier at night.
And not to interrupt, but I have to thank Larry and Amy for really pursuing that because obviously the improvement benefited one company but took place on somebody else's property, and they really jumped through hoops to get this project done, Amy on the design phase. It took a considerable amount of time to do it, but they didn't give up, and they bulldogged it, and they got it done, so we really do appreciate it, and I know the company sent us a very nice thank you.
And then, just lastly, I wanted to make everybody aware that the city of Twinsburg has been selected as one of three candidates for the Team Neo Inside Business Magazine's Economic Development Plus Awards in the Asset Creation category for the city's leadership role in redevelopment and reuse of the Chrysler, former Chrysler stamping plant site as the cornerstone business park. We are among three for the candidates for the award. The award ceremony will be held on July 9th at the Intercontinental Hotel Downtown Cleveland, and I know there are going to be some spaces available for any, for people who may wish to attend at, at our table, but this is quite a compliment for, for the city of Twinsburg, and we certainly appreciate the opportunity to go to that award ceremony as a candidate. And that's really all I have tonight.
And again, thank you for your hard work on that, Larry, that's, you've really been instrumental, instrumental in getting that project moving.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Please let us know if you're interested in attending either way, so we can keep track of who's going and who's not going. I mean, we have, we have a couple already that have decided, but let us know for sure. Thank you. That's all we have this evening, except we are setting up the date for the Laurel Bridge path grand opening ribbon cutting, and we'll let you know what that date is. It's really, really nice. Over the weekend, I can't tell you the amount of people I saw on bikes and walking, and something that, that we didn't have on that side of town, and people are really enjoying it, so thank you for that, too.
Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to legislation. First, we have Ordinance 41, 2014. Shannon.
In ordinance amending the current year appropriations for the various general revenue accounts as established in Ordinance 19, 2014, the appropriation ordinance of the city of Twinsburg for the year 2014.
Okay, this is the second reading. Next, we have Ordinance 44, 2014. Shannon.
In ordinance accepting the bid of Mara Services 700 East 73rd Street, Cleveland, Ohio 44103, for the Warren Parkway Improvement Project and declaring an emergency.
Okay, I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules on Ordinance 44, 2014, place it on its third and final reading, and declare it an emergency. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, I made the motion, it was seconded by Mr. Roden. Discussion.
The reason for the emergency is that the bids, we want to get started on the construction project, so we wanted to get this going as soon as possible, therefore, let's do an emergency that we can start tomorrow.
Okay, Shannon, please call the rule.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Okay, emergency clause passes, 6-0. Now, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Ordinance 44, 2014. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I made the motion, it was seconded by Mr. Roden. We do discussion again here? Any discussion?
We're ready.
Okay, no discussion?
Get ready to just go in.
Okay.
The residents are, have been waiting.
Yeah, I think people are ready, thank you. Okay, Shannon, please call the rule.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Okay, Ordinance 44, 2014 passes by a 6-0 vote. Next, we have Ordinance 50, 2014. Shannon.
An ordinance authorizing the lease of two vehicles through Ganley Ford Incorporated for use by the police department.
Okay, this is also, this is on its second reading. Next, we have Resolution 53, well, actually, Resolutions 53 through 61 are all resolutions from the Charter Review Committee. So we have Resolution 53, 2014. Shannon.
A resolution requesting and authorizing the Summit County Board of Elections to place upon the city of Twinsburg ballot at the general election of November 4th, 2014, certain proposed amendments to Article 3 of the Charter of the City of Twinsburg regarding council terms.
Okay, this is the first reading. Next is Resolution 54, 2014. Shannon.
A resolution requesting and authorizing the Summit County Board of Elections to place upon the city of Twinsburg ballot at the general election on November 4th, 2014, certain proposed amendments to Article 4 of the Charter of the City of Twinsburg regarding vacancy in the office of mayor.
Okay, next is Resolution 55, 2014. First, pardon me.
That was first reading, right?
That was the first reading, yes, I'm sorry, 54 was the first reading, right. So next, we have 50, Resolution 55, 2014. Shannon.
A resolution requesting and authorizing the Summit County Board of Elections to place upon the city of Twinsburg ballot at the general election of November 4th, 2014, certain proposed amendments to Section 4.05A of the Charter of the City of Twinsburg regarding the powers of mayor.
Okay, that's also on its first reading. Resolution 56, 2014. Shannon.
A resolution requesting and authorizing the Summit County Board of Elections to place upon the city of Twinsburg ballot at the general election of November 4th, 2014, certain proposed amendments to Section 4.05B of the Charter of the City of Twinsburg regarding the powers of, of the mayor.
Okay, that's also on its first reading. Next is Resolution 57, 2014. Shannon.
A resolution requesting and authorizing the Summit County Board of Elections to place upon the city of Twinsburg ballot at the general election of, of November 4th, 2014, certain proposed amendments to Section 7.05 of the Charter of the City of Twinsburg regarding the Civil Service Commission.
Okay, also on its first reading. Next, we have Resolution 58, 2014. Shannon.
A resolution requesting and authorizing the Summit County Board of Elections to place upon the city of Twinsburg ballot at the general election of November 4th, 2014, certain proposed amendments to Section 7.12 of the Charter of the City of Twinsburg regarding the Department of Parks and Recreation.
Okay, that's also on its first reading. Next, we have Resolution 59, 2014. Shannon.
A resolution requesting and authorizing the Summit County Board of Elections to place upon the city of Twinsburg ballot at the general election of November 4th, 2014, certain proposed amendments to Section 7A.01 of the Charter of the City of Twinsburg regarding changes to the zoning, and the, and the zoning of annexed land.
Okay, that's also on its first reading. Next, we have Resolution 60, 2014. Shannon.
A resolution requesting and authorizing the Summit County Board of Elections to place upon the city of Twinsburg ballot at the general election of November 4th, 2014, certain proposed amendments to Section 8.01 of the Charter of the City of Twinsburg repealing the primary election for the office of the mayor.
Okay, that's on its first reading. Next is Resolution 61, 2014. Shannon.
A resolution requesting and authorizing the Summit County Board of Elections to place upon the city of Twinsburg ballot at the general election of November 4th, 2014, certain proposed amendments to Article 7 of the Charter of the City of Twinsburg permitting the use of electronic notification.
Okay, and that's, it's first reading also. Now, we have Ordinance 62, 2014. Shannon.
An ordinance amending salaries, wages, and employment descriptions for certain employees of the city and updating the classifications of employees to be known as the 2014 Salary Ordinance and declaring an emergency.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules on Ordinance 62, 2014, place it on its third and final reading and declare it an emergency. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I made the motion, it was seconded by Mr. Ceraci. Any discussion?
The reason for the emergency is we want these changes to take place immediately. If it wasn't on emergency, we'd have to wait 30 days, so.
Any other?
If we need to do them immediately.
Right. Is there any other discussion? Shannon, please call the rule.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Okay. Emergency clauses, I apologize, Ordinance 62, 2014 ends as emergency, passes 6-0. Now, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Ordinance 62, 2014. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I made the motion, it was seconded by Mr. Ceraci. Any discussion?
It just sets a salary range for the clerk of council.
Thank you. Shannon, please call the rule.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Okay, Ordinance 62, 2014 passes by 6-0 vote as an emergency. Next, we have Ordinance 63, 2014. Shannon.
An ordinance authorizing the financing of a lease purchase agreement through First Merritt Bank of, of Twinsburg for three plow trucks and snow removal equipment for use by the service department and declaring an emergency.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules on Ordinance 63, 2014, place it on its third and final reading and declare it an emergency. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I made the motion, it was seconded by Mr. Yates. Any discussion?
No, this emergency is just so they can get these vehicles ordered, so we actually have them in time for, for the season.
Any other discussion? Shannon, please call the rule.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Okay, emergency clause passes, 6-0. Now, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Ordinance 63, 2014 as an emergency. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I made the motion, it was seconded by Mr. Scafidi. Any further discussion? Okay, Shannon, please call the rule.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Okay, Ordinance 63, 2014 passes by 6-0 vote. Next, we have Resolution 64, 2014. Shannon.
A resolution declaring it necessary to improve Chamberlain Road sanitary easement between certain termini by constructing sanitary sewers together with the necessary appurtenances.
Okay, that's on its first reading.
That one is actually a resolution that we're gonna, the other ones were resolutions, but we're doing it as a, we're reading them three times as a, to get it out to the community.
Yeah, the resolutions, just to clarify, the resolutions that were for the charter review amendments because of their importance, we typically don't read resolutions three times, but we're gonna do that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so I'd like to make a motion then to adopt Resolution 64, 2014. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I made the motion, Mr. Yates seconded. Any discussion?
Yeah, this is the sanitary sewer project up on Chamberlain that's been going on for several years, there's been meetings with the residents, so it's just finally moving forward, this is the legislation that's finalizing it and with the assessments and everything, so, this particular project.
Any further discussion? Okay, Shannon, please call the rule.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Okay, Resolution 64, 2014 passes by 6-0 vote. That is the end of our legislation. Okay, now, we're going to go ahead and move on to unfinished business, new business and miscellaneous. Mr. Ceraci?
Nothing here, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Fury?
Thank you. We've talked about some improvements for the golf course over the past few months, and we're looking at a, we'd like to add the, the first-year improvements to the bid list, just so we can get some firm pricing on this. That would include the, some hole improvements, practice screen and driving range, as well as the improvements that are necessary for the 30-year-old irrigation system. So at this time, I'd like to make a motion to add the golf course improvements to the, or the golf course improvements for year one to the bid list. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Fury made the motion.
Any discussion?
Oh, any discussion?
Yeah, what were those improvements again, those year-one improvements?
Uh, year-one were hole one, two, and eight, because we have a safety issue on one.
Right, okay.
We took the path out, we planned on taking the path out of the middle between the two holes. We've taken the trees down, that we've widened off the route to hole one, and put the car pass on the outside as we did on 10 and 18 on the other side, because we were, we constantly have people hitting into each other.
Right.
And, and we think that this will also speed up play. Hole eight, the green, has been, you can only use a third of the green, it's been an issue since the course opened. It's been an issue since the course opened. It's a saddle green, you hit the green, a ball rolls off. There's an improvement there. Hole nine, I think it's a widening and some additional landing areas over by the woods on the right-hand side. Then we've talked about enlarging our practice facility so that we have real grass to hit off like everybody else does because we've seen significant decreases in our our range things. And it and as this investment we put in, we expect it to recruit those funds. It talks about, this does the irrigation on holes one, two, eight, and nine, which could coincide with the holes that we're trying to do the work on. And it would take instead, right now, we have a single line of irrigation through the middle. Barely hits the edge of the fairways. And again, it's thirty years old and constantly having issues with maintenance on it. This would be a new system that we would install over the next three to four years. It'd be a dual system, so the runs would be on the outside of the fairway. And that would way, we could actually enlarge the areas that are being watered so that it would be less maintenance for us, as well as much more efficient with the water that we're putting out there. And also some, and then that's pretty much it.
That was it, okay. You want to add all that to the bid list?
Yes. And by adding it to the bid list, we'll get solid pricing on on what those items cost.
Right.
And then if we choose to go forward at a later date, we'll have that information available.
Any other discussion? Okay, Shannon, please call the roll.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Okay, motion passes six-zero.
Thank you. I'd also like to make a motion to have Twinsburg become a member of the Northeast Ohio City Council Association. And this is a professional association of city council in cities. There's twenty-six cities that are currently members. We discussed this earlier in our caucus meeting, so.
I'll second. And the cost is four hundred, right?
Four hundred dollars for the city.
And everybody's a member.
And everybody's a member.
When you say the city, all the council, about the mayor, Shannon, who's it, who's
City council members are members. It's a city council.
So all council?
Seven council members will be a member.
Any other discussion, questions? Okay, Shannon, please call the roll.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott? Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Thank you, that's all I have this evening.
Motion passes six-zero. Okay, now it's to me. I have, I'd like to thank Mr. Kautowski and Mr. Ceraci, too, for going around and organizing that parade of flags and pounding them into the ground. I imagine they were pretty sore, but it was very nice to see. And Daisy, really thank you very much for the Cleanup Ohio Day. I didn't get to the presentation, but it was sure fun driving around town and seeing all the green shirts walking around. So I really appreciate all your help with that. That's, and that's all I have. Mr. Scafidi?
Thank you, but I have nothing further tonight.
Okay, Mr. Roden?
Again, great job, Daisy, and to the Environmental Commission for the Clean Twinsburg. And that is all I have this evening.
Mr. Yates?
The only thing I have is just thank to the the residents and all that support the Memorial Day Parade that went on yesterday. It's just, it's important event in our community, and thanks for all that came out and showed their support. That's it.
Thank you. Mayor?
I would like to also thank Mr. Ceraci for your involvement in the Parade of Flags, and I know you worked very hard putting them up that day, too. So it was a long day, thank you. And also to VFW Post Forty-nine Twenty-Nine for the incredible ceremony on the square again this year. And their sixty-nine years of service to our community and to fellow veterans. They're an amazing group of veterans, and we really appreciate it. They're very active and very supportive of Twinsburg. The ceremony is unsurpassed, I think, anywhere, so congratulations to them. I was glad that I was able to participate and glad to see so many residents there. That's all I have, thank you.
That was fantastic. Mr. Maestros?
Thank you. I just want to briefly thank and recognize the Charter Review Commission members that were here tonight. I had the pleasure of working with them over the last several months. And I'd like to point out, I mean, they presented nine issues to council tonight, but they discussed many more. They went through every section of the charter. There was issues that were presented to them by email, by letter, and they discussed every one of them, debated it fully. And these were the nine they they brought forward. So I just want to point out, none of them had an agenda, none of them, they all came in with open minds. It was really enjoyable to work with them, so thanks, thanks to them.
I'm glad to hear that. I've had that on my notes, so I also would like to thank them as well. I know that was a lot of time they put in.
They did.
Shannon?
I actually do tonight. Everybody's talking about the Parade of Flags, but in addition to a portion of that thirty dollars going to help the cost of freedom in two thousand fifteen, a dollar fifty from every time that they put a flag in the ground, the Boy Scouts or any other groups. We've been talking with Girl Scouts and possibly Boy Scout, or the Baseball League and Softball League. So if they put all five flags in at a residence or on a, at a business, they'll get seven dollars and fifty cents for the year for every flag that they put in. So it's also helping a lot of the local nonprofits bring money in to support their their functions, so. And if you, if you're interested, there is a website, it's paradeoflags.org.
Great, thank you.